The Open Public Meeting Act, Public Law 1975, Chapter 231. According to the Open Public Meeting Act, this meeting of September 10th, 2025, was published in the Bergen Record and Herald News on January 8th, 2025, and was sent to our town. The executive session meeting notice was published in the Bergen Record and Herald News on September 3rd, 2025. In addition, copies of said notice are and have been available to the public and are on file in the township and the office of the township clerk. May I have a roll call, please?
Committeewoman Apiche?
Here.
Committeewoman Artola?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Miller?
Here.
Committeewoman Chowinski will be lead to the meeting there. And Mayor George Corbello?
Here.
Everyone's here.
Thank you. Okay, let's see, we're going to go into executive session. Resolution number 25-2241. Authorization to enter executive session, matters relating to litigation, negotiation, and attorney-client privilege, and matters relating to personnel. May I have a motion to go into closed session?
Motion.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Committeewoman Apiche?
Yes.
Committeewoman Artola?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Miller?
Yes.
Mayor George Corbello?
Yes.
Motion passed. Okay, we should be back somewhere in the air about 7:00 P.M. 7:01. Motion to, uh, motion to close executives, having come into regular.
I'll make the motion.
May I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Committeewoman Apiche?
Yes.
Committeewoman Artola?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Miller?
Yes.
Committeewoman Chowinski?
Yes.
Mayor George Corbello?
Yes. May we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? Before we do any of the Pledge of Allegiance, I want also to say a little of remembrance after the Pledge of Allegiance for the lives that were lost on 9/11 and continuously are lost over time. So, Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united in the resolve of liberty and justice for all. All right, so. Thank you. All right, so, to start off, I don't know if everybody got this. Very nice 9/11 memorial service flyer is on the table. This service is tomorrow night at 7:00 P.M. If it doesn't rain, which it doesn't look like it's going to rain, it'll be at 7:00 P.M. at Monument Park up by Middleland School. I wanted to start off with that. So now we're going to have discussion, of which we have our construction official here, James De Maria. Would you like to come and sit at the table?
Pick a table.
Pick a table.
All right, so, the public, my name is James De Maria. I'm the construction official. I also serve as a floodplain administrator and to the mayor and committee. Today, we're here to go over the new proposed flood damage prevention ordinance, you know, which is going to be introduced at a future meeting. But there is a lot of items within this ordinance that could be very impactful to the residents that, you know, live in the flood zone. I don't know how many people here live in the flood zone, but if you do, I know a few of the committee people, you know, live, this is going to be very eye-opening for you because it's going to impact your property for the forever future. So the overview, what is flood damage prevention? The requirements for this township to adopt this new ordinance. The areas affected, a few key definitions and substantial changes. So currently, we have a flood damage prevention ordinance on the books, but it's very minor in nature. So like right now, if you wanted to do a addition to your property, fine, you know, it's just if you exceeded 50% of the value, the property would have to be elevated.
James, why are we doing this now? This is a requirement?
Yes, yeah, this is a requirement. You can probably go to the next slide. It's coming up. Okay, so flood damage prevention, it's, it's pretty much to, you know, ensure, you know, public health safety, you know, and pretty, pretty much minimize the insurance companies' payouts over time. So by them going forward with this very strict ordinance, it's going to cause a lot of these houses to come into compliance in a shorter period of time than if they were to never, you know, do this. So who's required to adopt, as, you know, Chief Pingo had said. So back in November of 2022, you could see Union County, Gloucester County, Somerset County were required to adopt this. In 2023, Passaic County, Essex County, Camden County, and all the Bergen County towns. This was supposed to be, you know, fully adopted by July of this year. But as we go through this, you'll see how many critical decisions have to be made. And, you know, the key transparency here for, you know, the committee to make, you know, some decisions on this and, you know, how it will affect Rochelle Park. Every community is different. You know, Rochelle Park, you know, I think maybe we have 435 flood insurance policies. You know, some other towns, they only might have 100. So they might have just put this up there and adopted it and not even batted an eye. But for us here in Rochelle Park, that's not the case. So the next slide is, you know, what if we refuse to adopt this ordinance? Because after I finish this, you know, majority of you are going to be like, you know, this is ridiculous. So the township of Rochelle Park, you know, would be impacted by natural maintenance. The township would jeopardize the Class 7 CRS rating, which we have right now, which is about a 15% discount on, you know, 478 flood insurance policies. So that kind of like equates to about like $60,000. Not a huge factor, but, you know, when you divide it up by all those properties, you know, 100 here, 200, you know, there. So, you know, you will see it in your flood insurance. And the biggest thing is the township could be suspended from the NFIP, which is the National Flood, National Flood Insurance Protection, what you call it, you know, they pretty much dictate all the requirements, you know, for flood insurance. So without being recognized by the NFIP, that means you can't get a federally backed mortgage. So imagine somebody trying to buy a house in Rochelle Park without being able to get a federally backed mortgage. Almost impossible.
This building actually has a NFIP policy, so we wouldn't move that.
Yeah, and, yeah, that would be devastating to the community. So who's affected? If you live in a flood zone in Rochelle Park, I'm sure you know that you're in a flood zone. Obviously, over the past years, the, you know, there's been an influx of, you know, people from out of state that have moved in, which may not be aware of that, you know. They live in a flood zone. You know, some people come in and they hear, oh, it floods. People think, you know, road flooding, oh, the road floods. Nobody realized, you know, the floodwaters coming to their house. And it's amazing how many people I speak to that just think when they hear flood zone, they think, oh, it's street flooding, not a big deal. But for the veterans that live, you know, in these flood areas, you know, they know what happens when, you know, Sprout Brook, when the Saddle River, you know, unleashes fury, you know, upon our neighborhoods here. Slide please. So the key definition and changes, and this is where, in a few weeks from now, when, you know, the committee's about to adopt this, this is where it becomes difficult and this is where you might, you know, have that pushback. So has anybody experienced a flood in their house that, you know, is in the audience?
Probably.
You know, why, I'm sure, you know, everyone here. So typically, when you have a flooding event, all the residents build a routine. You go in, you cut your four inches of sheetrock out, you get the plumber, the water heater goes in, the new furnace goes in, you know, all this stuff goes out to the curb, and pretty much you're back in your house, majority of the time, in a reasonable, a reasonable amount of time. Unfortunately, with this new ordinance, that won't be the case. Because when your property sustains any type of damage, it has to be documented, and you have to obtain it if floodplain development. And that is where it becomes very difficult just to say, hey, okay, you know, let's adopt this thing. You know, so, you know, a lot of, you know, insight and, you know, information has to go out to the public. You know, unfortunately, we had the same presentation when Pete Donatello hosted his, you know, flood talk that he does every year at, you know, Met, and unfortunately, nobody from the community showed up. But there was somebody in the audience from Washington Township, and she goes, oh, my town did do this for me. And she goes, they just adopted this and, you know, I wish I would have known. So, you know, thankfully, you know, Rochelle Park knows, you know, and has, you know, done their due diligence on this, so, you know, they could make an informed decision for another residence and maybe themselves, because it's a little bit of a hassle. So I'm just going to read this whole definition because it's important for a variety. So ordinary building maintenance and minor work. So improvements defined as ordinary building maintenance and minor work projects by the Uniform Construction Code, including non structural replacement of any kind of windows, doors, cabinets, plumbing fixtures, decks, walls, partitions, new flooring materials, roofing, et cetera, shall be evaluated by floodplain commissioner through the floodplain development permit to ensure compliance with substantial damage and substantial improvement, you know, of our sugev ordinance. So right now, if you don't live in a flood zone, you could undertake sheetrock work. You could replace your kitchen in time. You could redo your bathroom. So for a legally existent structure, you could do a substantial amount of improvement that's going to increase the value of your house without the township even knowing. And say, you know, you're in the real estate business and you look houses, you know, you could take a 400 house, $400,000 house, and make it a $700,000 house very easily. So the NJDEP unfortunately didn't speak with the New Jersey Division of Community Affairs when they passed all the new regulations for ordinary maintenance. So the insurance company goes, oh, boy, wow, these people are doing all this undocumented work, and if those properties get damaged, the insurance claim is got to get paid out. It's going to be substantially more than what these houses were most likely insured for. So that's where they came and they combined and, you know, generated this modeled ordinance. Okay? So a big definition in this whole thing is substantial improvement. Okay? Like I said earlier, if you do a substantial improvement right now, it's only about one time work. So if you have a one-story house and you want to put an addition on, and it exceeds 50% of the improved value of the house, you would have to elevate it. If not, you would do the work, and that's it. Now, once this new ordinance is adopted, there will be a look back period. So it's just not that one time you're doing work. So the way the state sent this ordinance out for the municipality to, you know, adopt it, they put the burden on the committee members to pick that number. It could be 10 years, it could be five years, it could be three. So if you do a 10-year look back, that means over a 10-year period, any work you do in your house will be tracked by the municipality. And once you hit that 50% mark, I, as a floodplain administrator, have to send you a letter saying that no more work is permitted on your house, and it has to be elevated at your expense, which we know going through these grants, and I'm sure there have been all the issues, she's been throwing her purse out, elevating. It could be 300,000, 400,000. Who knows, it'll be, you know, five years from now. So the general consensus for, you know, the township was to go with a three-year look back as of now. That could change if, you know, they could say, 10 years, but I don't know. I could tell you that community in Washington, they adopted that 10 years. So for 10 years, all those people's work that's done in their houses, it's tracked. You get three bad hurricanes, or if you redo your house and get a hurricane, and, you know, there's a chance in 10 years, a lot of those residents are not going to be happy. So, you know, with the three-year, you know, you have a little wiggle room. If you know your roof has to be replaced, you know, maybe you could, you know, work it out, but it would probably be the best to not, you know, be super duper financially, you know, burdened on, you know, the residents. They also gave the option for substantial improvement and substantial damage. Instead of doing 50%, if the town wanted, they can go lower. It's only 25% of them, which, you know, would be, you know, very, very shared. But I don't think that's the way we're looking here. So as it currently stands, and, you know, obviously, it's up for, you know, you know, discussion, you know, when it comes time for an introduction, but the way it stands, you know, probably in the best interest of the township, to keep the 50% rule, add a three-year look back. Okay?
Excuse me, James. Just explain that look back again. It's three years looking back to see how much had been approved.
And whatever date you want to select. So you could even put, if you wanted, you could even go back three years and put that date on what, within this order, which I don't think would be, you know.
We could go back 10 years.
Right, you can do whatever you want. The only issue, go back the more early.
How about we go back one year? That's less burden. It's a minimum of three, right? It has, well, of course, is it a minimum of three? That's what I want to make sure. Do we have to abide by the minimum of three? Do we have to abide by the 50%?
No, it could be more strict. You could be more strict.
I understand that part, but.
But I can go to 75.
Okay.
And just so everybody's aware, Calhoun Engineering sat in on several meetings with Jay with myself. It was just, you know, reviewing this, and we'll come to this, is probably the most reasonable version that we're allowed to do.
And this is water, floodwater?
Yeah.
Not clean water?
Um, so it really, it could be fire. It could be wind. If your house is located in the flood zone.
Now, there's a 100-year flood, and there's 500-year flood.
Yeah, so 500-year, actually, you're not held liable.
Okay, so I don't make sure.
Well, if you're within a study order by, say, the Sprout Brook or the Saddle River, which sometimes overlaps some of our exzones, you will get, you know, lupus, you know, like some houses on Harvey that might be in an exzone, but are a study order course, well, they get, you know. And those areas could grow over time. You know, our flood maps haven't been, you know, updated, you know.
But they're not any, offering any financial to raise the house?
No. I would, you know.
I'm asking a question.
There, there is offers out there, but I don't think it's.
No, with this ordinance, that, this is required now, you're saying by the state? Who's requiring this ordinance?
Uh, NJDEP, yeah.
Okay, so the state, great. But they're not saying, okay, put this ordinance in, and we're going to pay so much to a homeowner to help?
No, there's no money.
There's no money? Just want to get that straight.
Yes.
Okay.
And no need in flood zone, right? These are only.
Flood zone, yeah.
So I'm saying, we talked about substantial damage, damage of any ordinance, say, by structure or by the cost of restoring the structure, so it's before damage condition would equal or exceed 50% of the market value. So, you know, down to 40, we hear a lot of this 50 rule. This is what they mean by the 50.
Okay.
One big change in this ordinance, previous to this coming out, any times we had previous floods where there was significant damage to houses here, the people were forced to only utilize the improved value that was set on our tax assessment goals, which is sometimes generally lower than what you could get at the market rate. You know, obviously, there's that adjustment factor. Within this new ordinance, we're able to have the people go out and get a third-party appraisal. So in a real estate climate like we are now, that improved value is substantially higher, so it gives you a bigger window worth of work you could do before, you know, having to elevate your house. And just for the people that, you know, I'm saying improved, so your property is set up, have you ever seen your tax bill? You know, there's, you know, the improved value and the land value. The improved value is your principal structure, and that's all they look at. They don't care how much your land is worth, it's the improved value. So typically, on a tax assessment basis, you know, obviously Rochelle Park is going through, you know, revalue, those numbers might go up a little more on improved, but typically, that number will be, you know, 160, 175, but for maxing, if it was only $150,000, you can go and do $75,000 worth of work, and this climate, $75,000, unfortunately, isn't a lot of money. So that's how quick you could be impacted by this ordinance. As I said, the floodplain development permit being required, so now any time after this adoption, if you're in a flood hazard zone and you undertake any type of work, you can't do so without floodplain development. If you do, we're now able to issue stop work order on the job and find that person for doing the work.
Good question. The permit process is the same as a building permit?
So the floodplain development permit is, it's probably a two-page document. You have to describe the type of work that's going on. You have to provide an actual estimate based on the guidebook that FEMA provides on what's to be included and what's not to be included in the cost of work. And, you know, if you have architect or engineer, you would upload that to the document. And right now, Rochelle Park, they haven't established if there would be a fee for this or not, but the permit would get reviewed, it would have to be tracked somehow. There's only one system that really tracks it, and it's rather expensive, it's about $12,000 a year, but it enables the people in the town to go on and look to see where you're at, depending on, you know, that, that three-year period.
James, you mentioned there's not yet a fee. What do you figure the man hours for review and, and, and all of that?
So per home? Per home, you know, depending on how much work's being done, you know, it, it could vary. You know, say we have 500 houses, you know, maybe you'll have, you know, 10 to 15%, you know, within, you know, a year, but that could be 20%, 30%. People are scared they might not do anything anymore.
Do you know what that cost would be to the building department?
To the building department? Uh, you know, look, there's obviously the enforcement aspect of it, you know, if you want somebody out there, you know, enforcing that, like I said, this will cost about $12,000. So, you know, it's, it's probably going to be about, you know, $25,000 to, you know, $30,000 worth of, you know, resources that is going towards making sure, you know, we're enforcing the ordinance, and Rochelle Park is, or isn't, or is, right?
But go home, you can my debt for about $1,500 then for application, you're thinking? Is that on the high side? Because if you rent 10 to 15 homes, $12,000 cost plus.
So I've seen where communities have scaled the application cost, where you're just doing, you know, minor, you know, work, you know, a roof, you know, it might be $75,000, but, you know, if you're undertaking, you know, major work, the permit might be on top. So, you know, just to be fair, you know, no review is the same in time. Also, when you do this for ordinary, you know, say it was ordinary maintenance, there's no physical inspection if the work is being done to code. It's only to pretty much document and account that what's on that permit was done. So if you said, hey, well, all I'm doing is my kitchen, well, we come, we verify that it was only kitchen work done, and the permit gets closed out, and we document it, and it goes on the books. But like I said, when it comes to a flooding incident, at times like that, you might have 200 applications at once, and that's where a major burden comes in and could be.
So you're saying that permits have to be granted, those, the permit process has to go during a flood?
Oh, yes.
And if they have that influx on that, how are you going to get these, you're going to displace people for how long out of the houses?
And that's.
How much?
Great point, and it's been brought up and just, if the whole, you know, the government's office didn't want hearing, you know, because, oh, okay, well, you know, if you were just, you know, if you did all that nice work to your house and you were just under that cuss, and then that happened, you know, a water heater could put you over.
Right.
Believe it or not, you know, and I know I would be very upset, you know, because, oh my God, a $1,000 water heater is going to cost me $400,000. But that's the way this ordinance reads, and it's, you know, as much as we want flood safety, it's horrible to do this to the people that are just trying to live and to put the burden on the municipalities.
So, okay, once.
I'm not finished yet. Also, the, in the beginning, you started out by saying, in order, we have to adopt this, otherwise we would lose.
Our CRS rating.
And what, what value, what monetary value are we talking about compared to what it's going to put on us in the town?
The CRS is a caveat to being in the NFIP, because in order to be in the NFIP, you pretty much, by being in the CRS program, you're guaranteeing these flood insurance companies that the municipality is doing all precautions necessary to reduce flood risk. If you don't care, then your ISO rating for your fire department, you know, you're an ISO, right, or, you know, say a, a Class 4, okay? You do whatever they say, you maintain those apparatus just for your fire insurance rates to be okay. If you got rid of your fire department, but you can't, and you can't get rid of your floodwater policies, pretty much, so.
You'd be telling the 40, 78 homeowners, look, we don't care that you.
Look, we may not adopt this. But then it affects, then it affects the whole town, because you can't get a federally backed mortgage.
It happens to be.
Yeah, but they, they could go out for their private home insurance for that flood?
Uh, yeah.
National flooding insurance isn't the only flood insurance available.
Yeah, there's other flood insurance. I mean, I don't understand.
Yes, but, but in order to get a federally backed mortgage, and I don't think there's too many mortgage companies that are not federally backed, that would pretty much mean you would need hard money put in in order to get a loan on your house.
It would be extremely course prohibitive to the property owner to secure the necessary insurance.
Right. I couldn't purchase my house in flood zone without all, the first full year paid of the flood insurance. That was the strictest paperwork of everything. And when you have a mortgage, there's a lot of paperwork. That was the strictest of all.
You elevate your house, right?
Yes.
For the life of your house, you're required to maintain a NFIP.
Yes.
Well, it's also just like the people that are going through that now. So if you take that away, what happens? You gotta pay a lot of money back, right?
Right.
That's in your contract, that's in the contract. So they really got your, you know, you know.
They got it.
Unfortunately.
So this floodplain development permit, the permit is for any work done to the house, but also work that needs to be done because of a flood. It's both.
Yep.
Okay.
Does it do the damage?
Right. Okay.
You save the cure.
So I'm going to give a scenario. I'm away on vacation, just a scenario, and my wash machine's upstairs, and for some reason, the pipe breaks, I come home, and my entire first floor, basement, second floor is split. All right, that's clean water, that's, you know, if that still has to go under this.
That's just an improvement.
Even though, but you'd have to be, oh, but it's not in a flood zone.
Well, your house.
My house is not in a flood zone.
Oh, you're not in a flood zone, but you're, this is only.
So that's like a 500-year kind of thing.
So if you're an actual, yeah, you know, you'll stay, you know.
But for those people that this can actually, you know, an accident can happen, and they happen to be in a flood zone, now they go into this category of, you know, to the percentage, and if you go above it, then you're going to have to raise your house.
Like I give that worry of a scenario, you could be, you know, worrying around. Like I give that worry, but scenario, you could be, you know, worrying nine thousand, you know, one dollar because you're a house flipper, and you're rolling this thing. The next person that buys it, buys it and goes, oh my God, I got a house with a water heater. One comes in here and says, oh, hey, went over.
So it continues with the house?
Life of the property. And, you know, there's another side coming up where, you know, even if you own your house outright cash, and you don't require flood insurance, you still have to buy and buy this because the next person that buys your house is putting in flood insurance. So they really have encompassed every little avenue in this work.
Well, their goal is to make people raise their house. It's like down the shore, you have Sandy, you know, they want everybody to have their houses on stilts, you know.
So it's less burden on the insurance companies? Is that what you're talking about?
Well, just, you know, because it's not only the insurance companies. When you have a massive flood like that, then FEMA comes in, it's a cost to everyone, and...
And we've had a few of them.
Yeah, but, you know, nationwide, you know, all these natural disasters, you know, well, I'm sure some of our policies are paying for Tennessee and, you know, North Carolina. These insurance companies, you know, they're not making money, they're paying out, so... Like additionally, you know, just to show how, you know, kinda like broke these insurance companies are, when you used to elevate your house, you wouldn't pay any more flood insurance. You'd pay it bare minimum. Four hundred fifteen, you know, whatever that money was supposed to be, what's gonna get lost? Everything's empty already. Now, when you elevate your house, it's gone. Your flood insurance policy premium does not get reduced no more. So there is zero benefits besides having a peace of mind to elevate your house.
Do you realize how many houses in this town would have to be elevated under that? I mean, I guess you do. Hundreds, hundreds and hundreds.
And then the insurance company will love us because they have, they're getting full...
Yeah, but there are people who can't afford that. And they've been hit many times. I know people that have been hit four times and their house destroyed.
And knowing insurance companies, once that substantial damage decision has been made on the property, they're notified, and I'm sure if you don't do it, they're gonna make you do what, you know, so.
I know. It's unfortunate, in my opinion.
It is. The slide here is pretty much what we've been speaking about, the, uh, the way it's, you know, calculated, you know, the fifty percent. So, you know, pretty much in closing, you know, what changed? Yeah, just to, you know, be repetitive one more time, because I'm sure when this comes up for introduction, yeah.
He'll be back.
Yeah.
No, we'll ask you to come back because, you know...
So pretty much, no work of any kind, they start NJ flood hazard area or FEMA's special flood hazard area until all permits, including annulating, to a floodplain development permit is issued. Work on properties will now be tracked and cumulative total value of work within a three-year period will govern if a property needs to be elevated. The township will be required to issue violations and stop work orders for properties operating without approval. Repairs after flooding events will be delayed due to requirements of the current.
So this will also, in my opinion, maybe make it that people aren't gonna come and get permits, are they?
And that's where the enforcement comes in.
Yeah, but good luck. I mean, sometimes people do a lot of things that, and I'm not blaming or saying anything.
Yeah.
But, you know, now, now we could lose permit fees, and people can do things that maybe are not to code, which could be dangerous for the homeowner as well as the surrounding area. Where do you, where is the win on this? I don't understand.
There is none.
Okay, thank you.
Unfortunately. And, you know, the reason why, you know, the other community I work in, you know, they were just as upset about it, you know, as you guys were. We prolonged it for three years, and we got the nasty letter.
Did we get the nasty letter here?
No, not yet, because...
We got the warning to the nasty letter.
The pre-nasty letter, okay.
And James and I have been talking about this probably since February.
Yeah, it's, you know, we knew it was coming. I knew it was coming, you know, because they said, you know, they came right off the coast. And, you know, I don't know how many, how many towns have tried to oppose this, but, you know...
Do you know of any lawsuits against this to, to, no?
Not that I'm aware of.
Do you know any? No.
I don't think you should win. No.
Well, I'm just asking.
I really don't know. I think it would advertise, and, you know, but...
They would probably say if they did or not.
You know, I know the mayor in my other town reached out to the governor's office and...
That's what they'd be doing.
They had, they had no idea of what was kinda going on.
The governor's office had no idea.
This affects, obviously affects commercial properties too, right?
Uh, so commercial properties, uh, they wouldn't so much have to be elevated. You know, they would have to perform, uh, like truck moving activities, you know, and so forth. New commercial properties, you know, they would have to be elevated anyway. Uh, but there's not that much of a restriction except if it's an apartment building. So that's where, you know, the new regulation. So you can no longer build a multiple dwelling in a flood hazard area
Like over here?
Without a safe ingress and egress. Here, they, there are safe ingress and egress. Egress is out the perimeter. If you were, say, to try to put a, you know, apartment building here, you would not get the EP approval.
When did municipalities start adopting this ordinance?
Uh, back in twenty twenty-two, they started that.
Most counties.
It was like county, county's out. Twenty twenty-three, they started making their way central.
Was it a direct response to Ida, or had this been a long time coming?
Uh, what triggered this was when the state of New Jersey passed the ordinary maintenance, where it said, hey, look, you can throw a roof on your house, no more permit needed. Uh, you know, you can decide on your house, no permit needed, you can reuse bathroom, replacement. You know, no, you know, twenty-five percent of, you know, the floor, you can re-shore it. You know, no permit, and they go, oh, this is not good. We're kinda skipping over, you know, awesome, we gotta pay the board permanent. And that's when, uh, you know, Detective Jones and most people at DEP got with the, you know, the Division of Community Affairs, who had over two seats, came up with this model ordinance. We have a flood insurance requirement now. It's just...
Doesn't include...
It doesn't include...
A little caveat with the look back that hurts us and the ordinary maintenance.
Boy, I can't believe that these municipalities that you were speaking of did a ten-year. I mean, the hurricane before Ida was what year?
Irene was twenty-eleven.
Okay, so that's within a ten-year.
It was almost ten years to the day. I'm sorry.
We've had, yeah, unnamed storms have impacted some of our residents with floods. So it would be devastating to make a ten-year.
Yeah.
The one I remember the furthest back was nineteen seventy-seven. That was the one I can remember back, and so we've been going on and on and on. Unfortunately, with the, you know, the climate change, as they're saying, it seems to be more frequent. We're even talking about that lately about...
Well, but that's why the three-year is the only common sense option.
And there's, you know, look, you as homeowner, you know, yeah, you can plan out repairs and say, hey, look, I'm gonna pull up my roof from, you know, twenty twenty-eight. Yeah. Tomorrow, you can turn on the news, like, oh, yeah, this is, you know, it's starting to hit the east coast. It's like, oh my God, I only got twenty thousand cushion room now.
Wow. Okay, great.
I don't know if you...
Anybody, would anybody like to motion open to public? May I have a second to open to public for questions?
I'll second.
Okay. Roll call?
Committeewoman Apici.
Yes.
Committeewoman Artola.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Miller.
Yes.
Committeeman Chwensky.
Yes.
Mayor George Provera.
Okay, open to the public for a question, just on this, for right now, please. Yes, hi. Your name? Diane Fraschel. Thank you.
And I'm not in floodplain, but first I wanna comment, I agree with you totally, Mayor, on what you said about the people not getting permits.
Can you come up to the mic? I'm sorry. It's hard. Sometimes it's hard to hear on the day.
Is that I agree with you a hundred percent, the people, it's not the permits for them.
Yeah.
They're just gonna do what they wanna do, and now it's already in the... And I'm just curious, is this something that, the permit process that was meant to be, is that something that you had to do? Or is there special training, or is the process different? The floodplain...
Okay, yeah, so, look, I sort of as a floodplain manager for the township, you know, our current, uh, you know, operating procedure, when we have something in the flood hazard area, you know, I receive a permit for, say, like an addition, I evaluate it, I look at the cost, and if, you know, you pretty much say, it's like, all right, well, you know, that's what this is getting close to being a substantial improvement. Cost estimate, it goes to Collers Engineer, who's our certified floodplain manager, who does the review to make sure that, you know, everything's in compliance with height and so forth. And that's how...
I'm just thinking how much this is gonna add to your ready work, though, I mean...
Oh, yeah, no, it's...
That's talking about, you know, my houses are cooking.
Yeah, especially if we get a flood. I mean, that's gonna be tremendous amount. Mr. Chwensky kinda hit it on the head when he said, how long are you gonna be out of the house? Because you have to do all this...
Times how many people that are in there.
Times how many people, and then times having all this done, so...
Yeah, you know, and, you know, I've worked very closely with NJ DEP, you know, as a construction official, that, you know, I'm involved in many flood communities. I do sit on many of their, you know, informational, you know, sessions, you know, and, you know, we have attempted to, you know, have a dark team, which is, you know, like a, like a team to come out to, you know, evaluate and conduct these, uh, you know, evaluations to try to speed up this process. But the DEP themselves hasn't, you know, they have not been that successful doing so. So, you know, it's, you know, you gotta hold your own and, you know, hope you don't get ordered.
Anybody else?
Well, just a comment on that.
I'm sorry, did you wanna ask a question?
Yeah, just a comment on that. Why wouldn't they use, if all the insurance companies are coming out and doing their exactimate program on all these houses anyway, why wouldn't they accept the, the, those numbers for, for, uh, evaluation to speed up the process, instead of getting all independent contractors and then waiting for all those, all those, you know what I'm saying? They gotta do it anyway. The insurance companies are coming, they, they're the first ones that are coming out to try and settle a claim with the homeowner, doing an exactimate on the damage, right, for the, for the house. They're passing off that information to the owner. So the owner has in front of them, you know, what the, what the estimated damage is gonna be on the... So my point is, why do you have to redo, why would you have to get further information on that or redo that?
Great question. So typically, when, you know, your insurance adjuster comes out, and depending on how hard the area is hit, sometimes it takes thirty, forty-five, sixty days for the insurance companies even to come out. And then when they do, their estimate or, you know, their, you know, their, their cost is based on things that might not necessarily reflect what FEMA's guidance speaks of. You know, uh, the insurance company's gonna give you money for your dumpster, for, you know, demolition work? That cost doesn't go into the substantial improvement. So, you know, I guess it wouldn't be, you know, clear cut, and, you know, you know, I've seen where, you know, the insurance company gives you money. It's for appliances sometimes, you know, appliances aren't cheap. So, you know, that's why I guess they don't use it. But they have no problem the following year looking at all the payouts and going, oh my God, you guys have this many claims, you know, where's all the substantial damages? Because they don't go buy the same thing, you know, we go right, it's just, oh my God, what do we pay out for a thousand dollars on this house? It didn't get elevated, and that's when they come back, like a year later, so.
Okay, I'm sorry. Ron?
Ryan Long, Taylor Stadman. In three years, someone only got a hundred thousand dollars left. You said hell, they're gonna sell me my house. So they have to tell them, you only got twenty thousand, include your house? So the guy said, no, it's a costly four hundred to put it up? Guess what? A lot of empty houses. So a lot of empty houses.
Yeah, so, yeah. Too difficult with that, right? You know, so, you know, your realtor has to be transparent, but the township also has to be able to accurately, you know, track ID and, you know, how this is being done. So, you know, that's why the one program, it's nice to go on, you know, and it shows where you're at, but, you know, you would hope that your, you know, your realtor follows the overall request and requests that, you know, and I know there's other stuff now with, you know, you have to report to the house before you're, some of those, you know, the requirements now. So I don't know if it'd be viewed like that, but, yeah. That's the other part that you have to worry about is the blight and the lack of people taking care of the properties, just to...
A lot of people begging, like, these days, cash. I don't know what they give the cash, but they kind of pay in cash. You know, seven, if you had seven hundred, five hundred thousand dollars to put it up. Now, that guy screwed me down, and they go, I'm gonna go back out and go move three hundred thousand. I don't care, but at least I'm not losing, you know what I'm saying? So down, you gotta have an empty house. But those people getting out, they're, I'm moving, I'm a wild...
Right, right.
So it's good in a way, and it's not good in another way. Somebody's begging money on this somehow. Okay? Somebody's begging money on this, because the guy's doing it if they're not making money. Somebody's begging money.
You know who's begging money? You're here, you're, you're, you're refusing the amount of claim the insurance companies have to pay out during a flood.
Doing the flood effect, but then you don't have the flood effect, I'm a twenty that make it. So if they're making that money, it's like, the time when these people hand me the money, they're not getting it, so... So somebody's begging money.
Thank you, Ron. Anyone else? All right, may I, I hear I'm seeing one. May I motion to close the public on this topic?
I'll make the motion.
You have a second?
Second.
Is there any questions that we have up here?
I have one more.
Oh, yes, yes.
So just to be clear, if there is a flood and people's houses get damaged, they need this permit before they could even cut out the walls or do anything. So I think that information needs to get out, because the people who have been through the floods, that's the first thing they do, is they find someone to do that. This is, yeah, and this is, I mean, our hands are tied on this, but this is going to be a big problem, because the mold does grow. The floods are normally in the summertime where it's hot, and you don't, the, um, the smell, the insulation in the walls absorbs it like a sponge. Um, sometimes people don't understand that, you know, we've had to go and tell neighbors, you need to cut these walls out, you know, they, oh, I cleaned the walls. No, no, you don't understand what's going on behind them. But I think, uh, maybe after we pass this ordinance, fortunately, we're going to have to do it, but that we're gonna have to maybe send letters or something to the residents to tell them on their first steps, because, like I said, especially the veterans of this who have been through it so many times, that's the first action they take.
And, you know, motions are also very high.
Yes.
During those events, and the last thing they wanna see is some, you know, municipal construction official come out saying, oh, no, no, no. Stop work. It's not, I, I, they move for...
All right.
To further, to further, to further Committeewoman Artola's point. I, uh, also, you could further that conversation to the cold. When houses go down and, yeah, no, heat, what's next?
The cold, okay.
What's next? You know, heat, pipes freeze, crack, create more damage, and a lot of these houses down in the maze have all their heating loops and all their pipes over the top in the attic. So...
There's no basement.
The essence, the essence of time for them to turn around and get their, get moving and get back in the house. I get people that call me on a Friday telling me, are you free Monday morning to come to our house? Thursday and Friday, and I say, why? And they said, we wanna be first on the list to get our house, to get our heat back on when it goes out from the storm that's coming on Monday, and I said, what storm? They know before the storm is coming and wanna make an appointment, and already have called the insurance adjuster for the same thing, and have a Monday appointment before a storm even comes. So, I mean, the amount of, when you're talking about, I just, I'm just envisioning mayhem and through trying to get through the building department, you know, and being a lot of pressure. If, if the issue is tracking three years back and you have to do some, or have to do some kind of research, I mean, is there research involved that you have to do to, to track the three years? Or you, well, no, you'll have already have that, that number will be already established. I'm trying to see, is there a way, preventative way to speed the process up?
So most likely, we would start from time of adoption. So we would start, you know, tracking the floodplain development permit. You would go on the portal, you would fill it out, it would get submitted. And then, you know, depending on what the township, you know, would like to do, you know, they could obtain that one software, um, that, you know, keeps that running track and is fully transparent for all the residents to see.
So it would be, it would be, it would be updated as any work was done through time?
Any time a floodplain development permit comes in, that looks like it's updated.
Update for that residence or that block and lot, that would be, that would be, so you wouldn't have, okay.
Okay, so you're saying also that it would be at the time of adoption that you would start? So three years from now, you would look back at three years, is that...
Yeah, so if we start as small, or, you know, whatever it is, it would be, you know, five years, first one's twenty-six, and, you know, where happens, and then you would go, yeah, at twenty-nine, you know, whoever's up there, and I'd be like, hey, you know what, I close it back in twenty-six, it would happen.
Yeah, yeah.
We're, this building's in a flood zone. So if we get flooded...
I'm sorry, Mr. Houghton, Walter Houghton, speaking. Yes, Mr. Houghton.
We're in a flood here.
Right.
So if it gets flooded, the residents are gonna have to go where? Because this is gonna be flooded.
Because this is gonna be flooded. So that extra, can't exclude that with the process, it's just gonna prolong it.
The building department.
Because the building department can't be reached. There you go. Because it's flooded.
This, this is not gonna benefit anyone.
Unless we do a satellite somewhere else for the building department. Right, we, we would have to have something else. Hold on, I'm sorry.
You're gonna have to have like a mobile...
Mobile building department, like unreels.
Set up some sort of online construction that we currently don't have.
So Mayor, as you're aware, you may not be aware, but should be, you know, we've always moved our operations down to Lots Lane, taken the second floor, set up the Bay Area for municipal offices, building department, and we, we've managed, you know, thank goodness for today's technology, it's just a matter of basically flipping a switch, logging into Wi-Fi and being able, but again, the software would have to be purchased in, in order to do that.
And I understand the point, and I do know that is used before, but I also know that area flooded and how to move it to another place and I...
Well, actually, yeah, they left the police department there on trailers and the township moved to the, uh, next to the Outback.
Yep, so, I mean, I, I, I'm sorry, may I have a, may I have a vote on closing this to the public? Roll call.
Committee Woman Opechi?
Yes.
Committee Woman Artola?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Miller?
Yes.
Committee Man Chowinski?
Yes.
Mayor Judge Cavello?
Yes. Okay, so everybody has questions answered? I know, I know. All right. Thank you, James. I know that we'll talk about this, I will ask you to please come back.
And, and I think that... Four hundred other residents that they might have about this.
Oh, I'm sure.
Wear a helmet.
I'm sure. But I think that...
Wear a helmet.
Right now, um, with this, do we have an ordinance that you have already for this?
Uh, so, uh, Mr. Chino, this has prepared the draft, uh, we will finalize those options that are up to us to decide and, you know, I don't know, you know, maybe...
We need to get this public, we have to get it, you know, as soon as possible.
You'll, you'll just back down, you know, it's gonna be, it has to go to NJDP for final review.
Okay.
Once they approve the draft ordinance, then they're allowed to introduce it.
Got it.
So you're looking probably, you know, if we get this all squared away by October, probably looking for, you know, most likely in November, uh, you know, mid-November introduction.
Well, thank you very much, James, for being here and explaining it. I, I mean, it has to be, not the greatest news, but, you know, it has to be. Thank you very much. Okay, so...
Thank you, James.
Good night, James. All right, so next discussion is the amendment of Chapter 161 entitled Streets and Sidewalks: Violations and Penalties. Would you like to start with that?
Sure, Mayor. So, uh, as you recall, last meeting, one of our residents, um, came forward and gave her opinion, which I happen to agree with, that many of our code enforcement penalties are grossly under fined because they haven't been updated since, you know, whether it be early 2000s, some even the 90s. Um, I know you expressed concern over the snow removal one, um, and that, that, right now, is it a seventy-five dollar fine for the first offense? And trying to, you know, create some consistency across the fines, I asked Mr. Chino to write it up at a hundred and fifty dollars. Will you express some valid concerns?
I did, I did, and, and, and I'll explain why. Just for that, with the snow, um, when we have, uh, snow in, in, in town, whatever, blizzard, even a little bit of heavy snow, a lot of residents in this town are seniors. There's a, we have, we have a large population of seniors, and I think that expecting the increase on that, because sometimes they have to find somebody to help them shovel. And it's not always easy because back in the day, I do remember children being out there shoveling all the time, you know, for a couple of dollars, they would shovel, but you don't see as much in certain areas and maybe they're backed up. So I think raising that above the seventy-five, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Yeah, because I haven't, and it's funny because I'm literally looking at the ordinance right now. You know what, Mayor? I absolutely agree with you to that measure, that, you know, given 24 hours from the time snow stops falling, if someone doesn't shovel their sidewalk, especially a senior, that's probably severe to raise it above seventy-five. What I would like to do, and Mr. Scatino, this is important, I'm realizing that those penalties go for all of the different subsections, such as people plowing into the street, people casting with a snow blower into the street, so that's a problem for our DPW, have to constantly go back, so maybe we increase it for that, those subsections, and leave the one for the shoveling from sidewalks at seventy-five.
Right, or commercial or any of that.
Correct, and most of those offenders are commercial landscapers that come out and just do what they believe they want to do.
Because, yeah, you know, I never understood understanding, I mean, you don't have to agree with me, but this is discussion. I mean, I know for a fact there are seniors who have to go and try to find somebody to help them shovel, and, um, sometimes they have to do it, and it might be a little slower because they have to take their time to do only a little patch and then go come inside and rest because of whatever health conditions, and then do it again. So you have it at 24 hours and sometimes it could take longer than that.
Correct.
Unless you have a very generous neighbors that help out.
I think we keep that section of the 24-hour at seventy-five and maybe the other subsections increased to one-fifth.
I don't have a problem with that because that, that was my, so that's why I wanted to talk about it. All right, is everybody okay with that?
Yeah, me so.
Yeah, all right, I appreciate that. So how do we, we're gonna handle the amendment on that?
Yeah, so just send me your mark up and...
Will do.
We'll have it for the next meeting.
I appreciate it, thank you so much. Anybody else have questions?
Um, I don't know if we could ask the our town to do this. I don't even know if they do it anymore, but there used to be a list of babysitters that maybe if we have kids, maybe like teenage or pre-teen who are strong enough to do some snow shoveling, they want to make a little extra money on the side. At least there's a list of kids who are willing to do that, that they can be hired, just like you would hire a teen to do babysitting.
Yeah, I mean, I think I remember it being maybe, maybe a couple of years back. I, I absolutely remember it because I remember my brother being on it.
Me too.
I know Mr. Pundel was on it. I mean, I know there were some Boy Scouts that, that added to it. I don't know if they would be interested in something like that too, but I think that it would be, to me, you know, it's helpful. I, I see some children going around and they say, "Well, do your driveway and we'll do your sidewalk," you know, for twenty bucks or whatever, and everybody, you know, there's a lot of people give them fifty dollars instead of twenty because it's so appreciated, but to find them when they can't find somebody, that's what I'm saying, and a lot of times. So that would, that would be something we could look at too.
Yeah, and maybe if, um, you know, parents out there encourage your kids who are old enough to help the elderly neighbor, even if they get little or no money, that this is what we do neighborly.
So this is a community thing, right?
Yes.
This is a community effort and a community, I know there's people that need service hours, and if you need a service hour, I'll sign your paper, you want to come and do that. You know, I lost my husband, so it's a little hard for me, and I can't push a, a snow blower to save my life, but...
We'll give you thirty shits out.
Okay, no. Hey, why didn't that peanut gallery? I'm sorry, Mr. Pundel, you have a second?
Uh, you know, Mayor, with the newsletter that goes out, I think that's a great little segment that maybe you put in there, like, you know, the township was seeking people, and we'll put a list together and put it on our website.
Sounds great, that's a great idea. Thank you very much.
It's our updated website one day.
All right, good. All right. I know, uh, I'm sorry, I have a motion to open a public, there's somebody that asked about it, has a question on it, must have wanted to do a quick question.
No, no, just Dominic Pizzuto.
Dominic Pizzuto.
I was wondering, because I was thinking about that the other day, because I still double people, I double them when I was a kid on my block.
Wait, you're not a kid anymore?
No.
My dare student.
I remember.
But if there was like a way we could get like a, a list of the seniors in town that actually need snow shovel?
We could have, we could do that.
We could do a signup.
We could do that at your meeting.
Yeah.
Do a signup?
I, I have a senior meeting tomorrow.
I have a couple on my block that I do, but I also do fire hydrants, like Joyce icing lives, owns a complex, that's through the apartment. I do her, uh, fire hydrant too, because no one does it, but I was just saying, if we could get a list from the seniors in town, we're gonna be...
So I, I'm at the, I'm the senior liaison and they have a meeting tomorrow, so I'll ask if there's someone that would may need it and then we can always put it in our newspaper and, uh, kind of connect them.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah, I was thinking about that two days ago, so...
I know, before you know it, you know. Thank you, Dominic. All right, okay, so let's move on, so, wait a minute, do we have that on here, Billy? Okay, we're waiting for it on here. Right. So, um, that's gonna be in, I believe it's gonna be in, the administrator's gonna start with the, the Green Street.
Sure.
Yeah, I have to get correspondence first, please.
Yes.
Okay, moving on.
Miss Kim?
And Mayor, you're going to do this into the record?
Please. So this was received today, just this after this evening, right before we came in, and I asked, um, Mrs. Kim to read it into record, and this was an email sent to the Township Committee.
Yes, uh, this was sent by Chairperson John Opechea of the Recreation Committee. Good afternoon, Mayor and Committee. At our regular monthly meeting held on September ninth, the Recreation Advisory Board Committee discussed the recently adopted ordinance establishing recreation as an advisory body. Following a thorough review and discussion, the committee voted unanimously to respectfully request that the Mayor and Committee consider transitioning recreation from an advisory board committee to a recreation commission. We believe that establishing a commission will provide significant benefits to both the borough and the community we serve, including, uh, there's five bullet points, enhanced structure and accountability. A commission offers a more defined and autonomous framework insuring, ensuring stability, consistency, and transparent governance of recreation matters. Number two, strategic planning for the future. With the authority of a commission, members can engage in long-term planning, program development, and facility improvements that align with the committee's, um, vision and evolving community needs. Number three, expanded funding and resources. A commission's structure provides greater opportunities to pursue grants, sponsorships, and partnerships, which can reduce reliance on municipal funding while improving recreational offerings. Four, increased community involvement. Establishment of a commission reinforces the township's commitment to recreation, encouraging greater volunteer participation and fostering stronger resident engagement. And number five, positive impacts for residents. A recreation commission can more effectively promote health, wellness, and community connection through quality programs and services available to residents of all ages. The Recreation Advisory Board Committee is confident that this transition will strengthen our abilities to serve the township and will result in lasting benefits for our residents. We respectfully submit this request for your consideration and look forward to the opportunity to further discuss how this change can be best implemented. Thank you for your time and continued support of Recreation and Virgil Park.
Thank you, Mrs. Kim. Um, so it's duly noted, we will speak to council, point out for recommendations, and get back to them as soon as possible with what, what would be best or what everybody decides to do, and discussion on it. But I appreciate it, and I'm glad it was read into record. All right, moving along, we're gonna have, um, so the, the adoption of minutes for work public session of August 27, 2025, and executive session of, of August 27, 2025. Motion to adopt these minutes.
I'll make the motion.
May I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Committee Woman Opechi?
Yes.
Committee Woman Artola?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Miller?
Yes.
Committee Man Chowinski?
Yes.
Mayor Judge Cavello?
Yes. Motion passed. Thank you. Uh, approval of the agenda, may I have a motion to approve this agenda?
I approve the agenda, resolution 25249, which is the approval of the handbook, has one, uh, highlighted part that needs to be filled in, which is the level of insurance that you wish to require volunteers who use their vehicle for municipal purposes.
Right.
So you have to fill in that blank before you adopt this.
So there's a question about that, I don't know that we're, um, I, I talked to a few. So this would be their personal vehicle?
Right, correct.
Used for public business.
Correct.
And they would have to have a C O Y?
They would have to have insurance for that.
They have, well, they have to, then, everybody who drives a car would have to have an insurance and you have to have some certain policy limits which you're going to establish with this policy.
So... But my question is, and I'm, I'm gonna open it up to everybody on council, but my question is, um, this is for town business.
Right.
Correct.
So I'm driving here in my vehicle, I have to have a C O Y?
No.
Right, I'm coming here for business. I'm coming here for a meeting tonight.
If you were to load your car, Mayor, with fall festival advertisement lawn signs and drive them to go put them on your front lawn or other people's lawns, that's township business, but just coming to the building and leaving the building, no. Uh, Mr., and I, I don't mean to call you out in any way, but...
Mr. Houghton.
Mr. Houghton, in a respectful manner, always uses his personal vehicle to help him set up for access for all. He would be required to provide us that he has proof of insurance, and it's ultimately protecting him as well as the township.
So what is, what per se are we looking at?
Did, did Mr. Cavelli get back with you now? I'm assuming he did not?
No.
Okay. Um, I think three million's on the high side. Um, I know, Mr. Scatino, I think you agree.
Yeah, that sounds, that sounds pretty high.
Yeah.
I, I, I think a million dollars would understeal.
Yeah.
And then there's an aggregate, is it one million, three million?
Yes.
I, I would say, oh, that, this is done by resolution. If, if your risk manager gives you a different number, you just can't...
It's a board.
But now adopted, it's better to have something in place, make it one million, three million.
Okay, so we can put that in, so, okay, great. I just want to clarify.
Yeah, you have to do that.
You know, Joe. I meant, yes, Mr. Chostet.
Just a question, what profit did this? Um, we've had several, um, some issues with, with volunteers, uh, on different committees for the township, whether it be, you know, posting on social media, you know, proposing to be, you know, a member of the committee or committees, um, and we really have no way to, I don't like to use the word discipline, but I, I, as administrator, I have a role. Someone is holding himself out as a, a, a member of a committee and misleading the public or giving false information, you know, whether it be on social media or even in person, there was, there's no rules in place. This kind of just puts it, and this is used by multiple municipalities around the state, it's actually written by Clary Jacoby and Alferi, who's, you know, hired by the JIF to write it. It's kind of the rules and regulations of, hey, if you're gonna volunteer for the township, you have an obligation to meet these minimum standards. And, and again, probably through lawsuits from, you know, lawsuits against municipalities And, and again, probably through lawsuits, from, you know, lawsuits against municipalities, from volunteers who probably crashed their car, you know, this one section, and said to the town, oh, you owe me, you know, because I was doing your business.
But an auto, an auto policy is going to cover for a liability issue?
Yes.
Claim?
Correct.
Yes.
Yeah.
You will?
Yes.
And a standard automobile policy would fall in the aggregate, or are we asking volunteers to up their insurance policies? Well, if they're going to use their vehicle for municipal business, they would have to comply with the, with the policy. Most people probably have a million, three million.
Yeah, probably.
A million today doesn't go too far, because if you're in an accident, it injures someone. That's really what it comes down to. Someone's in an accident, they're negligent or careless or even reckless, and they severely injure someone. So they should have a policy for that. And if they don't, it's going to fall to the township to cover whenever they don't have.
Okay. What, I guess my point was, what I'm trying to understand is, I'm just trying to make sure that we're not enforcing, we're asking a volunteer to go out, out of their way to get an additional policy or another policy.
That's what I was kind of saying, to say-
Or above and beyond what they normally would have, otherwise-
Because they're volunteering, right?
Absolutely.
So that's why I say about, but-
Right, but then they just can't use their vehicle.
So what are they going to use?
They have to get another volunteer to do it.
Okay.
I mean, you, you know, again, it's not, a million, three million, I believe, is-
Like the minimum.
On the low end of insurance, and if someone is not carrying that type of policy, you know, there may be concerns with the vehicle that they're using, because it may be very old and they don't care about the vehicle, or they, I don't know, to increase your policy to that is not prohibited, even if you're under that.
Right, right, right.
The, it's recommended by the JIF, I think that, again, the liability would then just convert to the municipality if someone is underinsured. So it's really protection for the municipality.
So this, well, could take enough, let's see how we get to that, Josh?
No, but then a million, three million, and then if the risk manager recommends a lower amount-
And we can change it.
Over it, and just do it by a resolution.
Are we all okay with that? Yes.
Yeah, is there like a spectrum of, or like a timeline of how the disciplinary actions work? For the social media, for example, like, you know, if two volunteers are bickering at each other on social media and saying awful things to each other, like, is there, I didn't, I don't think I see anything about, like, first offense, or, you know, is it immediate grounds removal? What does that look like?
I believe it was left up to the administrator for speaking, kind of speaking with them to try to resolve something. I believe I read that somewhere.
There is a complaint procedure-
There is, yes. Complaint procedure rests on page nine.
Page nine.
And then, you know, at that point, Mr. Miller, what I would do was turn to the township ordinance as far as employees, because at the end of that sort of volunteer, is there an unpaid employee of the township? So we would look to the discipline, oh, I'm sorry, the discipline policy as far as that goes.
Got it.
Yeah, and I could tell you, obviously, without sharing names, I've already had, you know, a couple verbal counseling with some volunteers over that one issue.
Gotcha.
And so far, so good.
And it would be, you know, be the, you're giving wide latitude, because to the point being made, they are volunteers, but by the same token, if they, you know, for example, as you see, there's drugs and, and that's the violence.
Yeah, of course.
That's not going to be slap on the wrist, I imagine, that's going to be removed, but if someone just, you know, forgot to sign something, so I could get that trust in your department heads and administrators or supervisors, wherever the volunteer is working with, to use the proper judgment. And of course, they always have the ability to appeal, even if it's not in the policy, to the governing body. So whatever the discipline is, it's not that they're precluded from coming to the governing body and saying, I think that's too severe, and the governing body, of course, always has the authority and the discretion to override whatever decision is made by a supervisor or department.
Through the chair, mayor?
Yes.
I mean, again, there's also, you know, New Jersey State Model Procedures for Internal Complaints alleging discrimination come into play. There's all a bunch of things that, you know, I'm bound by as the HR director, right? So again, it's just not really, it's just not, it's not Dean's kangaroo court, I could guarantee, I can guarantee that.
Well, I, I mean, I understand, too, if somebody feels harassed, or intimidated, or bullied, or anything else, that you can, they can come to you and discuss. You know, we're trying to work together.
Correct.
So let's work together.
And that's, and that's what, you know, again, I gave two examples without giving specifics, but I've already dealt with two this year, and, you know, those people, so very viable volunteers in our program.
Right. And we appreciate all our volunteers.
We do.
All the time, because they do a lot of work, and sometimes, in my opinion, they're not recognized enough, but I recognize them as much as I can. And I appreciate everybody, everybody that does everything. I volunteered since I was 16 in this town, starting as a coach, ambulance corps, CCD, board of ed, 15 years, I mean, I can go on. I know you volunteer, I know a lot of people volunteer. Nat has done soccer for many years and volunteered. You know, we all try to do the best, so we appreciate our volunteers at all, in aspects, so. We don't want to make it too much, but if it gets, we have to have something to back it up, and that's what I think we are obligated to do. Right. Mr. Truansky?
Oh, yes, it's actually, I think, Dean mentioned, it's sort of benefited volunteers too, you know, that there's certain guidelines and that prevent something, which would be fair to say, oh, I never knew that, no one ever told me.
Right, right.
So I think once this is adopted, it should be given to every volunteer and let them acknowledge receipt of the policy.
All right, okay. Any other questions? No? All right, so let's move on. Anything else on that? Did you see for the adoption of the, or agenda? Anyone else? Anybody? Okay, great. May I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
Motion.
May I have a second?
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Committeewoman Peachey?
Yes.
Committeewoman Artola?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Miller?
Yes.
Committeeman Truansky?
Yes.
Mayor Judge Cavello?
Yes, thank you. So we don't, this is actually a work session we haven't had in a little while, so there's not usually any reports from our community people, but we got the next one. I just want to say one thing, I think I gave it to, I think I pointed out, but it is, it will be free. But there's two things. Tomorrow is a senior meeting, coming back from summer break, but also tomorrow is the anniversary of another, some people that walked in a little bit late for 9/11. It is at Monument Park, which is at Middle One School, it's at 7:00 PM. Supposed to be a nice evening, I think it's going to be around 8:00 during the day, and that night might be a bit cooler. And this is the 24th year, so if you want a pamphlet, there's one over there, and I can give you information about it. I just wanted to do that, one part of it. So, thank you. Let's start with the attorney, do you have anything to include?
Well, as the, as the governing body knows, we had a dispute with Larissa as a, what they classify as a type-two heavy user of our sewer system because of the amount of, let's say, waste they put into the sewer system. The mayor had requested that I look into, because they haven't been paying any fees to the municipality, which we're entitled to collect, so at the mayor's request, I did look into that, and we should have a settlement with them where they will pay most of what they owe retroactively for the past four or five years, and then going forward, they will continue to pay, and it's a significant amount of money, it's approximately $40,000 a year. So it's additional revenue that will come into the town, and we're just in the process of finalizing the agreement to commit them to pay, not only pay the arrears, but going forward as well.
So we're looking at approximately about $160,000?
Yes.
Totally. Thank you for working with me on that, I appreciate it, and I know the committee has all has spoken about it also. Thank you for your support on that, Dr. Penny. So then we have, I'm going to, I'm going to get to you, Dean, one second.
No worries.
Anything with the Clark report?
No report at this time.
Okay. Administrator?
Thank you, mayor. I'll start with Burdan Street, that is our next road project that we're looking at. Received last week some preliminary plans regarding the Burdan Street project, I forwarded that to the Shade Tree Commission regarding the trees, because I wanted to make sure that they were happy. I just want everybody to be reminded that that project started in June of 2024, thus it was pre our adoption of our green streets and complete streets policy. However, I've been pleading with the engineer since that time and since the passing of our resolution regarding the completing green streets policy, to work in anything we can. There are going to be several traffic calming things added to the project, as well as about 40 trees. Just, and keep in mind, though, mayor, many people, I didn't know this either until I asked why, because I was looking at maybe squeezing some bioswale, some green infrastructure into the project, and Boswell Engineer reminded me that the current base flood elevation for Burdan Street is elevation 43. The general grade of the road varies from elevation 40 to elevation 36, which is obviously already below the base flood elevation, so to do the bioswales and to eliminate flooding wouldn't work. And we're very fortunate, and I know this was, Dave Brown was very happy, that we don't have ponding issues on Burdan Street, like, as we've done, you know, we had on Rochelle and Peak, or we've had on several other side streets that lend themselves to these things. However, I'm going to continue to bang the drum as best I can, and, you know, work with the engineer, and I could tell you, going forward, we've already, you know, the policy's already been sent out to Collier's Engineering, who's submitting a grant for Chestnut Ave and Lincoln Drive, and, you know, we will completely use our green and complete streets policy towards those projects.
Stop by and jump in for a second. This was, this was brought up, and it's a concern, an absolute concern. So myself, Deputy Mayor Miller, the administrator, I'm trying to think who else was the engineer-
The engineer and Dave Brown.
And Dave Brown. Were able to talk about this because it was in 2024, and we did ask a few questions, and we want to clarify this now, moving forward, and with the green streets policy, the resolution that we have, I would like to see maybe if we can even get an ordinance on it to make all of the things correct, maybe we can look at that. But moving forward, I would like to make it very clear, any other projects, road projects that are going forward, and I believe the rest of the council will back me on this, has to include these people, including the, you know, engineer, planner if needed, Dave Brown as superintendent, and whoever else is on that list, I think, that was quite a big list.
Yes, Shade Tree, Environmental Committee.
From moving forward, they have to be included. Now, I did speak with the attorney about, like, if you could speak about the advisory committee, that it's been set up for, would you?
Well, the advisory committee, which is presently meeting, set up by resolution, allows for representatives from each of the board, as well as the, I believe, the police chief to superintend, and also committee members. What I've discussed was that we should not have a quorum of individuals from either the Environmental Commission or the Shade Tree Commission participate in the subcommittee, because then that would require notices and maintaining minutes, and that's really not, I think, intended for the subcommittee, to be that formal with respect to complying with all of the requirements. What we could also do, starting with next year, I mean, because this is the end of the year now, we could, we could adopt an ordinance and give it more structure if that's what the committee wants. The other issue that we may want to address is the number of individuals that are going to be on the committee from the, from the community, if that becomes an issue, and also maybe to codify, again, restricting the number from each of those different commissions. But you can work with what you have within those parameters.
Right.
And it's not that you're precluded from having more, but if you do, then again, you have to fully comply with the Open Public Meetings Act, which imposes more restrictions on the committee and more logistics for them, which, again, I don't think was the intention to make it that formal, that's why it's a subcommittee.
Right, because the Shade Tree Commission has to adhere to Open Public Meeting Act, not the subcommittee being, that it's advisory.
As long as it's not a forum.
Right.
So I think that, I think that it should be understood, and I think that the chief understands, I'm sorry, the administrator understands, I'm sorry.
Both.
Both. The administrator understands.
Yeah, I actually-
This can't happen anymore, but this has to go forward. Now, I know it was 2024, we didn't adopt this until July of 2025, but moving forward on any of the new projects-
I actually look forward to it, mayor, I, you know, since I've taken over as administrator, not to bang my own drum, but I'm very proud of the amount of trees that we've increased, and I look forward to working with the committee on, and I'm all in on the completing green streets.
Because it can't, you know, everything, this is all new. This is new for our community, right? And sometimes when new things happen, you got to get the kinks out of it, and it can be extremely frustrating. I understand that, and people could be, you know, upset about it, but it's going to take a little bit, well, we'll get there, but just moving this way and inclusive of these volunteers-
Absolutely.
Who are giving their time to do this, and it's much appreciated, and this is the way I believe we should go forward.
Absolutely, and, I mean, just being more transparent about our road projects and getting more resident input even at these meetings, and possibly the opportunity to bring these road projects to our land use board to get their feedback. I think that, I think that that would be super beneficial.
I believe I spoke to the attorney about that, that has to be, if needed, for the land use board to look at the road projects, if that's, if that's needed, I believe that states law, right?
In the resolution?
No, I mean, yeah, well, it does break down who should be there and if land use board needs to be.
I'm not referring to completing green streets.
Oh, I'm sorry, what are you referring to?
Just if, if a road project is happening in Rochelle Park, then I don't think it would be a disadvantage for the land use board to have the opportunity to weigh in on it.
That's, yeah, you, they're not prohibited.
Right, so historically, it just, it hasn't happened.
I think the, the code officials also support it, right? I think James is part of that also, involvement with any of the, no?
With car and road projects?
No, no.
Oh, no.
Any, any future, would that entail anything that he has to do, or?
Not necessarily, no.
Okay.
Township road-
But we were looking for, I know, I just spoke to somebody-
We're not to the UCH, we don't change the place for that.
I'm sorry?
Mr. Truansky had asked me, because of flood plan, but we basically don't change base flood elevation.
We don't?
No.
Okay. So, I mean, somebody recently said they read it on, they read it on Facebook, about how nice Howard Avenue is, and they came around, took a ride down with the rumble strips that were put in there, I think it's over eight to 10 feet they were put in there, and I can tell you, I've lived on that street all my life, and it makes, to me, it looks like a big, it makes a difference to what I'm seeing. Not that you don't get any speeders, which we still do, but it's not, to me, as bad as it was, and I think that maybe could be looked at, an ongoing project for the rest of the, now, this is just my thing, but this is a public opinion too, somebody from the public came to me and said they would really like it on their street. So these are things we can look at. Okay, and anything else, ma'am?
Just a couple of things, mayor, I have an update on the roofs project, the current status is, the delivered 50% of the material, which was unloaded to the roof, which include the silicone product, torch down rolls for repairs, primer, patching product for the application before the silicone installation, the initial roof cleaning, which is a power broom, preparation has been completed, we all heard that while working here. Drains were checked and unclogged where necessary, and Collier's Engineering received a payment request number one. However, they're going to continue to work with the vendor, because there's some items that need further to be broken down, and so they're not signing off on it yet. But our next steps is we'll start the roof substructure repair, order the skylights, order the scuppers, roof vents and drains and supply house are ready for delivery, which is good news, and then they'll begin to install the torch down repairs of existing roof with drains, vents, scuppers, and parapet walls, and expect to be on site September 15th. Then they will power wash the roof as per the manufacturer's specs, install the primer, brush every seam, pitch pockets, vent pipes, all penetrations with this ASC 911 product and polyester mesh silicone, and then apply the silicone product, four, product, four gallons per roofing square to get to the 30-year warranty. So it'll be, basically be a big fishbowl, but it's going to keep the water coming into the building, and it'll drain much better now that it's been done. Once you're done with the roof silicone, they will score this, install the skylights, and then final inspection is expected to be done on or before September 30th, and they'll remove at that point to the slower roof. So we're moving ahead on that. Just an update, this is the Matthews Field Open Space Grant, met the other day, actually, Mr. Truansky ended up being there for a different business, but he was with us, and Joe Kozinski and James McGinnis from Boswell Engineering, and Dave Brown and I, we've since tweaked the plans, the initial plans, a little bit. Dave Brown had some great ideas, and then Boswell themselves had an even greater idea, and I see Mr. Wrigley left, but too bad, because I know he'd be happy with this, rather than continuing, originally, we were just going to level off the outfield grass and then put the new fence in. I think Boswell came up with a great idea, which I love, because there's still going to be, you know, soil erosion will occur with grass. Instead, what we're going to do is the hard pack clay, and so it'll actually have a warning track. So it'll look much cooler, it'll play much better baseball, and it'll actually keep the field in better shape for a longer period of time, so just wanted to bring you guys up to speed on that. And lastly, but certainly not least, the Howard Avenue tree project, we have the bid opening for the larger section of Howard between Patton and James is scheduled for September 17th, and again, that was two different road jobs, two different vendors, and two different engineers, but I've coordinated Neglia and Boswell to make sure that the installation of those trees, once that bid's awarded, occurs on the same couple of days.
Wonderful, thank you.
Thank you.
Also, this could go under, new business or not, but I attended the Recreation Adult Baseball League game, championship game, on Sunday night. Wow, it was packed, it was crowded, congratulations to Mastro's Pizzeria that competed against Wrigley Busy Bee. This, this was terrific, and it was a lot of fun to watch, and it was a great turnout. Again, thank you to Rec for getting that all together. And then on Friday, it's been a busy week for a lot of us, but Administrator Pinto and I actually got to meet with Congresswoman Nellie Poe, and one of the biggest concerns that I expressed, and as well as the administrator, of course, is the flooding, but it's the cost of dredging Sprout Brook and Saddle River. We need this funding, it's been given to other towns, or you need to bring these people in here and do it. Because no matter what we do anywhere in the flood area, unless we have, in my opinion, this stuff dredged, which used to be when I was young, they would come every two or three years and dredge the Saddle River, and then I think it was in Army Corps of Engineers came in and said something, and I know Dean remembers this, and maybe you do the gal too, where they would come in with dredge it, and we didn't have this. We're tired of it. There were, there was about 45 mayors there from different towns, and this was a very big, big concern. And I told her, you know, wherever you can get the federal funding, wherever you have to do it, I'm going to, I'm going to come, I'm going to, I'm going to keep in touch with you, a lot, because, you know, we can do all of our road projects, we can do all our plants, and we can do everything, but the minute these rivers come over, there's nothing more we can do. And I've lived here over 60 years, and I've watched what happens to these people, and now with this new house ordinance that we have to have, it's scary. So now even only hearing this, we really have to be on top of this. So, you know, I can, I can fight with the best of them, but I'll tell you something, almost every single mayor that was there, even one from Passaic County, stated that stated that we need this money for flooding and we're, we're going to work for it and we're going to work hard. And I appreciate Administrator Pinto for coming with me because it was a little bit of a demonstration that we were kind of caught up in.
It wasn't a little bit, it was a demonstration.
You know, it was a little fearful, but.
A group came into the room taunting the poor Congresswoman, shouting their displeasure or position on something.
Yeah, so, but they were escorted out. But again, you know, we're going to keep fighting for this for Rochelle Park and do what we have to do. And hopefully we can work something. It's not gonna, I don't know if it's gonna happen tomorrow, but I can tell you, I'm gonna work to get that something, something, something. All right, and that's all.
Excuse me one second?
Yes, yes.
Further along that conversation with, with, with the flooding, there's two approaches that have to be taken, I feel. One is exactly what you just said, and with the local, and with the, and with the county and with the state. The other, your state legislation has to be passed for runoff. Runoff has to be looked at, commercial properties that are dumping into the Sprout Brook and waterways that have no limitations on the, on, on what they're doing. And until that's done, until that second prong is done, you can dredge down the rivers as far as you can go and as far as we're allowed to go where they originally were. But you're not going to stop the amount of waterfall that's coming in. If you go driving over by Garden State Plaza and you go up all the commercial properties, I'm all over the state. And when I drive up and I see the corrugated pipes and steel pipes that go on the side of these banks, twenty-four inch, thirty-six inch pipes, and when it starts raining, watch those pipes, like somebody turn on the faucet, until you start taking that water and making it being, some, more of it being retained on site. And the legislation has to be passed to look back into any waterways that are being, that are being used for drainage. Because it's, it's, it's crushing every water, and it's not just our area anymore. It's all over. I drive through areas, I get called into areas to work on stuff that I would never, never in thirty-seven years think that I would have to drive through to work on a house that floods. Never. So it's gotta be two-pronged approach. The second part has to be, I have to, I'm telling you, it has to come back. Like Garden State Plaza, when it used to have, remember, we used to have gravel? Gravel and water, of course, we're not going to have gravel there, but there's gotta be another way to address the drainage on those parking lots and those.
So next time I go to see Nellie Poe, you're coming with me because I will fight, fight for the right things for this to help the community. I mean, I understand what you're saying about the runoff. There needs to be. You can, you can give legislation to demand that houses be raised, but you're not looking at the other aspect of where the flooding is coming from. And, and like you said, this is an issue. It is a two-pronged thing.
It's not the single-family residences that are asked to put thousand gallon dry wells in their backyards. That's not causing issues with these waterways.
I understand. I understand where you're going. Thank you very much. Anybody else in new business or? All right, so we're gonna do the part open to the public portion. May I have a motion to open to public? May I have a second? Roll call.
Committeewoman Apici?
Yes.
Committeewoman Artola?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Miller?
Yes.
Deputy Menchurinsky?
Yes.
Mayor Judge Cavella?
Yes.
Okay, it's open to the public. Anybody? Mr. Mattson?
Andrew Mattson, Eldorado Port.
Is that all?
Just hold until Karen's clear.
Andrew Mattson, Fortune Eldorado Port. The flooding, I agree with the runoff. It's, it's crazy. And, and I know when Team Rochelle Park, they did their flooding little symposium thing. And they had a lot of pictures. It was really interesting. And if you think about along the Saddle River, you know, you just drive up Paramus Road, there's a lot of land where you could put like a bioswell. Because I don't think anybody's going to be playing golf during a hurricane. And, you know, you install some pumps and you pump the water and then you pump it back afterwards. But it would need to be a massive project to try to divert some of that water as it comes down the stream, because it is coming like a, you could see it on, even on the Sprout Brook. If you stand there during a storm, you could see all that water come. It's crazy. So I appreciate the discussion. That's all.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Houghton?
Yes, Walter Houghton, West Old Street. I'm here because last meeting, I didn't get a chance to because of the concert. I wanted to get up there to set up that sensory tent. But a national light out, we had support and help from the office staff, Gina, Michaela, Mike, the police department, fire prevention, the library, and Mr. and Mrs. Chubel. So I want to thank them for their help. And for the concert, I want to thank the office staff. And a big shout out to the DBW for helping us with our shut up. Thank you.
Mr. Houghton, how is it working out with the new area?
Uh, having, other than the stuff being down there, I haven't gotten a chance to move everything yet.
Oh, but you are going to move. You're moving into the new.
I'm moving it, but I, you know.
No, no, I understand. I just wanted to say.
I'm only one person.
I understand.
Can only do so much.
Gotcha. Thank you very much. Anyone else? All right, hearing a scene, no one. We have a motion to close the public.
I'll make the motion.
You have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Committeewoman Apici? Committeewoman Artola?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Miller?
Yes.
Committee Menchurinsky?
Yes.
Mayor Judge Cavella?
Yes.
Okay, motion. In the introduction for the ordinances, Gina, would you please read the ordinance and the numbers, please?
We have ordinance twelve forty-seven dash twenty-five, amendment of chapter seventy entitled Brush Grass and Meats. Ordinance twelve forty-eight dash twenty-five amendment of chapter one twelve entitled Garbage Rubbage, Rubbish and Buckles. Ordinance twelve forty-nine dash twenty-five amendment of chapter one seventy-seven entitled Vehicles Abandoned.
Okay. Anyone on the, have any questions about these ordinances that are being introduced? No? No, we're good. Okay. May I have a, a motion to introduce these ordinances of twelve forty-seven, twelve forty-eight, twelve forty-nine dash all twenty-five?
I'll make the motion.
May I have a second?
I'll second.
I'm sorry, who's second?
We both did.
Okay, just pick it.
I forgot it first.
Gina?
Deputy Mayor Miller motioned it. Artola seconded. Committeewoman Apici?
Yes.
Committeewoman Artola?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Miller?
Yes.
Committee Menchurinsky?
Yes.
Mayor Judge Cavella?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, let the clerk read the next statement.
Notice, it's hereby given that ordinances twelve forty-seven dash twenty-five, twelve forty-eight dash twenty-five, twelve forty-nine dash twenty-five were introduced and passed on first reading at a meeting of the Township Committee of Rochelle Park held today, August twenty-seventh, in order published in accordance with the law. Said ordinances will be considered for final reading and adoption at a meeting held on September twenty-fourth at seven PM in the township of Rochelle Park Municipal Building, at which time all persons interested will be given an opportunity to be heard concerning such ordinances.
Okay, very good. Thank you. So we have the adoption of ordinances and these are, have to be individual. I can open it one time to the public, but these are individual, correct?
Yes.
So would you read the ordinance, please, Mrs. Kim?
The ordinances will be, uh, will be considered for adoption tonight is ordinance twelve forty-four dash twenty-five, amendment of chapter one eighty-five entitled Land Use and Development Regulations. Ordinance twelve forty-five dash twenty-five amendment of chapter one and two entitled Fire Prevention. And ordinance twelve forty-six dash twenty-five Establishment of Policies and Procedures for the Rental of Billboard Display.
Okay, I'd like to open this, well, three of these to open to the public. May I have a motion to open to the public?
I'll make the motion.
May I have a second?
I'll second.
And roll call.
Committeewoman Apici?
Yes.
Committeewoman Artola?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Miller?
Yes.
Committee Menchurinsky?
Yes.
Mayor Judge Cavella?
Yes.
Anybody from the public would like to speak about any of these three ordinances? Hearing a scene, no one. May I have a motion to close to the public on all three of these ordinances?
Motion.
May I have a second? Roll call.
Committeewoman Apici?
Yes.
Committeewoman Artola?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Miller?
Yes.
Committee Menchurinsky?
Yes.
Mayor Judge Cavella?
Yes.
So I'm going to do the motion to adopt ordinance twelve forty-four dash twenty-five. Correct? I'm going to do them individually, so everybody gets this one on top.
Yes.
Okay, so may I have a motion for twelve forty-four dash twenty-five?
Motion.
May I have a second? Roll call.
Committeewoman Apici?
Yes.
Committeewoman Artola?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Miller?
Yes.
Committee Menchurinsky?
Yes.
Mayor Judge Cavella?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion to adopt ordinance twelve forty-five dash twenty-five. May I have a, a motion to adopt this?
Motion.
May I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Committeewoman Apici?
Yes.
Committeewoman Artola?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Miller?
Yes.
Committee Menchurinsky?
Yes.
Mayor Judge Cavella?
Yes.
Thank you. And also, the last one is motion to adopt ordinance twelve forty-six dash twenty-five. May I have a motion to adopt this?
Motion.
May I have a second? May I have a roll call?
Committeewoman Apici?
Yes.
Committeewoman Artola?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Miller?
Yes.
Committee Menchurinsky?
Yes.
Mayor Judge Cavella?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, so we went through the public, we made the motion to close to the public also. All right, so the consent agenda, all items listed below are considered to be routine and non-controversial by the Township Committee and will be approved by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a committee member or citizen or so requests, in which case the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence on the agenda as part of a general orders. So we have resolution, and it'll start with the twenty-five. And it goes two forty-two, two forty-three, two forty-four, two forty-five, two forty-six, two forty-seven, two forty-eight, two forty-nine, and two fifty. I have a motion to approve this consent. It's for car lot, yeah, great. But that's for construction.
Probably two four seven.
Yes, recreation facility.
Also two four seven?
Two four seven.
Okay. Any bills that are associated? So you're accusing them of something that's, okay, perfect. Thank you. All right, anybody else want to recuse themselves from the now?
May I, I guess, a quick comment?
Sure, absolutely.
Because you're voting on the extension of summer hours. I just want the public to know that the building's going to remain open on Wednesdays till seven PM, but close on Fridays at noon. So we're keeping the summer hours because there's been nothing with positive impact from you, the folks that come here. And this, the mayor charged me with the, finding out if the employees wanted to continue those hours, and they do. So again, please take advantage of it. Wednesday nights, you can, you know, get all of your services until seven PM.
And that's also the building department?
Correct.
Okay. So the, okay, so what was, I, I asked the administrator to ask the employees with the consent of the, we spoke about, you know, with the rest of the Township Committee, because a lot of residents, you know, work nine to five. By the time I get home, it's five-thirty. And they have a business they have to do, and the business would be, this township is closed at four. And it was continually doing that. And a lot of residents said to me, they enjoyed to have, to be able to have that option of a nighttime. Most towns have a nighttime. I don't remember when they ever had a nighttime hours here. It's probably why, but Dean, do you remember?
I don't recall. I don't recall. I know I started it in twenty-three, doing the summer, doing the summer hours.
So now, let's see how this goes, because it was very, from what I understand from the, the, the public and the employees, that it was, it was taken favorable. So in that aspect, we're, we're, we're going to go forward. And if it's a change and something comes up, and everybody kind of, I understand all the employees agreed to it. And they liked the idea. Now, leaving at twelve on Friday doesn't always mean, our clerk seems to leave at that time all the time, but.
For all the time, no.
And the administrator is usually here too, but that is the hours for the employees. And I think, well, you know what, it's, it's a good change and for the residents of Rochelle Park to have the opportunity. So thank you, Mr. Administrator Pinto, for doing that.
Thank you.
Chief Administrator, I'll just go on.
Call me Dean.
Justin, okay, okay, okay. All right, so, anything else? No? May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Did I do this? No, I didn't. May I have a motion to?
I'll make the motion.
May I have a second?
I'll second.
May I have a roll call?
Committeewoman Apici? Okay, and for the record, she has recused from two forty-two, two forty-seven, and two fifty. Committeewoman Artola?
And any bills that would be outstanding on that?
Correct.
Okay. Yes.
Committeewoman Artola?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Miller?
Yes.
Committee Menchurinsky?
Yes.
Mayor Judge Cavella?
Yes.
Okay, so our next meeting will be held on Wednesday, September twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five at seven PM. The agenda is subject to change at any time at that point. And may I have a motion to adjourn? May I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.